Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission on February 7th. And first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve.
I move.
Moved by Stephen, seconded by Dick. Any discussion? Seeing none. All right, all in favor of the agenda as listed? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next up is approval of the minutes from January 24th. Motion to approve those. Moved by Kate. Seconded by Dick. Any discussion?
I have one. On page two, two-thirds of the way down. Said that I spoke in support of keeping an accessory apartment in a detached building as a conditional use to allow the neighbors to make comment and because allowing two-bedroom units can change the character of the neighborhood. It wasn't two, it wasn't two-bedroom units, it was detached units. That's what should be there.
Where is that? Because at the bottom it does say detached.
Right here. But what I was saying was it was because allowing two detached bedroom units could change the charac-- I didn't mean two-bedroom, it just means detached units.
Right.
So I would like to change that to detached units instead of...
It already says detached units.
It does.
Yeah, so you'd want to strike everything...
Well, just the second line, it says, "make comment" because allowing two-bedroom units instead of two-bedroom units to say detached units can change the... How do I see what you're saying? I still think it should be detached units. Instead of, instead of two-bedroom units, it should be detached units. That was impetus.
Marion apologized as she's working from the video and has a house full of sick kids and people like that.
Good luck to her.
And she, and she doesn't want to be sick and, yeah. We hope you're not sick.
Yeah. Thanks for not coming to make an announcement.
Yeah, she was not sick yet. Anyway.
That was it for me.
All right. Yeah, and I didn't have any corrections, just more comments that aren't totally relevant. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the minutes as with that adjustment? Aye? Any disclosures tonight relating to any potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none? Open to the public? Good chat? All right, so moving on to zoning matters. The first one is the, what we were discussing last week and I think, or last time, that was last week, wasn't it? Part of me wanted, I think just from recognizing the discussion last time, unless there's any change in views or anything from that discussion, maybe that should be my first question. I'm assuming you still feel the same way, right?
I do, I do.
Okay. Then, in, in really thinking it through and having some wild cards for March with me being out and I think there were some other absences as well, and I was a little concerned that if we warranted hearing and then didn't have, I mean, not to call you out, but if we didn't have the votes to pass that hearing, then we shouldn't have it. Until we either discuss this out a little bit further or have the votes. So I'm certainly open to any thoughts, ideas, or alternative approaches. I did, just as part of this conversation, I wanted to clarify a couple of things, and this is more just to say out loud, that in our current, our current bylaws have a permitted use for a one-bedroom that's 30% of the floor plan of the main house. Right? And currently, it's the two-bedroom that is conditional for, again, 30% of the floor plan of the new, of the main house. So the, the main change that we're talking about here is just, is bumping the 30% to 50%, putting a cap of, the Housing Committee had 1,500 square feet, there was discussion of dropping it to 12.
15 sounds good.
And, and just in making that permitted. So I just wanted to, to bring up, just bring that up as a thought because a one-bedroom that's 30% of the floor plan of a main house without a cap, like, I don't feel like we're, I don't know that that's a huge change that we're talking about. Like, I understand the concerns. The 30 to 50 is one thing, and I feel like this...
30 or 50, I mean...
No, yours is a one-bedroom versus two-bedroom, right?
No, I'm, I don't mind a two-bedroom being, as long as it's attached. My problem is having detached without a conditional use. I'm not even saying you can't do it, I'm just saying that detached...
To have a conditional use.
Right, that's my only concern. But as long as someone wants to add on a two-bedroom, I don't think it makes a difference if it's two or one-bedroom.
Why wouldn't that change? The, the way the neighborhood is, is set up.
If it's attached, it's not being, I don't know, we got deeply into this discussion about, did you get a chance to see that?
I just read the minutes, but I was part of that first, the first time we had the conversation.
So, I don't see any difference between a single bedroom or a two-bedroom if they're attached. But I see all kinds of problems and issues. There's a lot of different areas. For one thing, that originally when we started talking about it, it wasn't going to take place in a rural area where we just put together a reg that really controls how we're going to develop the rural area and protect those natural resources and, and view, scapes and all that other stuff. And by doing this, we're just saying, well, they can go ahead and put that two-bedroom, 1,500 unit anywhere they want. So it kind of defeats the, what we've done out there. I, I don't know if you, I do...
No, well, and I get it, and part of me, and when I was reviewing this and really thinking about it and I was taking notes of different areas, and I do feel it's important to talk about this because I feel like we're close. And when I, like, I'm trying to put myself in that perspective and then I think, well, if you, if you just focus on the detached part, then you get into the monolith argument that I think Stephen, you raised last time.
Yeah.
Which, to me is, could also be a big issue. And based on the idea that you're still going to have, we'd still have the existing setback rules and wetland rules and all of the other rules that would govern where something could be cited and what space it takes up, it became, it seemed to be less of an issue, especially when I started thinking in terms of, well, where this is really the most applicable, this discussion, really, the crux is in the rural area.
Where the lots are, at least.
Where the lots are big enough to be able to do that kind of thing.
And if you have a conditional use hearing on the accessory apartment, no one shows up because the lots are so big and it's so far away.
Right. So I, and it was more just me trying to reflect and think, how big of an issue is this based on what we have now? So if we were to do nothing, I feel like we could have the same problems that we're being objected to.
I disagree, but it's, you know...
I mean, it seems like, Dick, what you're against is doing a detached unit of any kind, any size, without conditional use.
Correct. And my reason for doing that is it's like taking increasing zoning 100%, basically saying you put a house in every single family home in Shelburne. No other community is doing that that I'm aware of other than, there may be one or two, but I mean, most, every town is already as strict or stricter than we are. So I don't see the reason to push this through, other than, I think, making it two-bedroom is good. It's a good idea. And as far as being a monolith, we're limiting the size. Maybe we should go back to rethinking it. If it's a one-bedroom, maybe it should be a little smaller. If somebody wants to do a one-bedroom accessory, you know, 1,500 feet.
Can I bring out a prop?
Yeah.
Exhibit A.
Yes.
But I'm not going to change my mind.
No, it was just, yeah.
Just, I don't want to use a whole bunch of time.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Did you make that yourself, Steve?
Yes, I did. Here's a single-family house on a lot, okay? Let's say whatever square footage it is. Now, somebody wants to, and there's, like, figure that it's in a pattern of a neighborhood. This is, you know, looking at a neighborhood rather than a rural district. So there's another house here, there's another house here, oh, good. Yeah. And so there's this modulation of houses going down. And somebody wants to add, in addition, that's half the size of their house, and this is just slightly bigger than half the size. But if they have to attach it, say they're doing this, or they're doing this, you know, where the other house is here, why is that better? I mean, why is this better than doing something that might be this right here where, hold on, where it's detached, it's keeping the same, like, this guy's a skyscraper, what's he doing here? But keeping the same, like, rhythm and size of houses, and this is, consider this smaller, I only had so many props to choose from. Why is that better than, than this for the neighborhood? Where you can do this without any conditional use? And your neighbor might be right here, and you're all of a sudden putting a wall right there.
You're still preserving the character of the neighborhood by having a single unit, and that may be a prop on a close-in lot, but it, it doesn't make sense to me to do that.
I have to say, I would much rather live with, next to something that has the unit in the back of the lot than, than in the, in the front like that. I think that would be much more impactful. And I used to live in a place in Washington, a suburb Arlington of Washington, where that's exactly what was happening. The small, little, you know, 1950s-era houses were being added on to, and that's exactly what was happening. So oftentimes very insensitively, and it would, it would have a pretty profound impact on the entire street.
I don't think people in Shelburne use their front yards to live in. I mean, they're decorative, they do that, and they mow their lawns and they take care of their flowers, but they don't spend their time out there. They spend their time in the backyard with the grill and the picnic table and the pool and, and the openness of being in Shelburne. So if you're going to stick a house back there next door to it, especially in the smaller lots in the village, you're impacting on their privacy, and, and that's not what they bought. They bought this house because, you know, I show houses every day, and people, they go out and look at that yard in the back, and if it's, something is in the way or doesn't look good, we're leaving.
But what is the, I mean, now that we're past the crash, how long do these houses stay on the market? I agree, there are people that don't like that, but there are other people that would be happy to just be living in Shelburne and find a place, especially one that might be a floor.
Well, I'm concerned about the people who live here now. That's where my argument's coming from. It's the people who live in the neighborhoods.
But right now with what we have, granted, it's not 50% and 1,500 square foot cap, but if you had a, I mean, you, you could still end up with the problem that you're talking about.
Yeah, somebody could add on there.
They could, but they're not going out 100 feet behind the house or, you know, they're just directly, you're maintaining the same space. You're not putting in an extra-long driveway.
Well, people are parking here still.
Wastewater is, wastewater and sewer can be close. There's a whole bunch of reasons, but you're beating a dead horse if you're trying to get me to change my mind if this...
No, I'm trying, mostly for me.
But the discussion for me is, you know, I've, I think I've kind of expressed it a number of times, and I, I'm perfectly willing to just, let's have our vote, and if it's four to one, then I'll make my arguments with the hearing, you know, it's, there's no point in...
Right, but then if we get to the hearing and we don't have the numbers, then I'm not going to even have the vote because it's just a waste of time at that point. I mean, if I knew that we were going to have a full quorum and that was going to be an issue, then you could voice your, the nay, and, and that would be fine. But, and part of the reason for bringing this up is because when I was reading through this and just thinking about what is possible today, and it's not like there's been a big run on people wanting to add accessory apartments and adding that 30%, and when I think of the themes that are in the plan, and I, not to rehash what we talked about last time, but I was, I think I was trying to hear, because I do understand concerns, but the concerns that I'm really hearing, it boils down to NIMBY, and I can completely respect that.
That's a weird term because...
You're literally talking about a house being next to somebody's backyard that they wouldn't want it.
That's their entire right, though, is to be a NIMBY. That's exactly...
They have a right to buy the land that they bought? They don't have a right to dictate what happens to the land around them as long as it's within the rules? And in this case, we would be...
Well, we're changing the rules for them, so that, what I'm saying is...
That's what we do as a planning commission.
No, it's not necessarily. We don't, first of all, planning commission, its gear or drive shouldn't be seeing how fast we can develop the town. And that seems to be the direction we've been going in recently. We're supposed to be developing the town in a manner that protects the rights of the individuals who live here. And that's, and I've, you know, I've been on the commissions for a long time, and I've seen how things are changing. So like, your ideas are completely different than what was the drive and the commissions that made the regs that are in place now. And I think they're good regs. And, you know, we keep talking, if you want to talk about the Housing Committee, they're all developers. They, of course, are in favor of development.
Sure, all right.
Pam Brankin isn't.
Well, I'm, you know, the majority is.
Mark isn't.
I don't know what Pam does.
Pam works for the CCRPC.
Doesn't, it's not, I'm not faulting them for being developers, I'm just saying they are all developers on that, or almost all.
Yeah, the growth, I thought the town plan that we wrote was reflected the fact that growth, growth happens, that growth is coming, and that all we can do is try and manage it and shape it, and it's got to go somewhere.
And we recognize the need for needing affordable housing and workforce housing.
Exactly, yeah.
And there's a dearth of those things here.
And, and our, our greatest priority is to protect the character of the rural areas and also to, you know, protect the character of the village while at the same time finding opportunities to increase density within it in ways that are compatible. So I, I just don't see how this is at odds with that.
Well, I think it is. This is a difference of opinion.
Dick, can you talk about the pattern of the neighborhood? And then, just excuse me for wasting our time so much because I know it's not going to convince you, but the pattern of the neighborhood, you say, is single-family. Well, you could say it's also asphalt shingles or whatever you want to, you know, hang your hat on. But to me, the more important pattern of the neighborhood is that it is single-family. But in a way, that's, single-family houses are all along here. If you all of a sudden let somebody, without conditional use, do that, they're creating a duplex ostensibly, and that's against the pattern of the neighborhood. If you let somebody do this, then you're basically keeping similar size or, you know, half the size, single-family houses in the neighborhood. So to me, it's, it's the, the volume and mass of the, the total building itself in the, in its own envelope that makes a difference rather than call this single-family, you know, it's not, it's a duplex. And you're introducing that into my, my neighborhood, and I don't want a duplex there. I want single-family houses.
When I live, I have two duplexes across the road from me and an, and accessory building in the lot next to me. And they're all, well, one is in a barn. But the duplexes are basically, I think, what we should be aiming at. There's my notes.
Why?
Why what?
Why duplexes? Why should we be aiming at duplexes?
Well, because we're maintaining the same structure we're talking, are we calling these accessory apartments because they're designed after the accessory apartment that the state of Vermont created? Or are we just changing zoning and calling this accessory apartment?
Well, the state of Vermont allows that, allows detached.
But if we're doing an accessory apartment, it's, we're trying to do affordability. And by putting new structures up, I don't know that we're doing that. You put that separate house up, if it's an attached apartment, it's probably going to rent for 1,100, 1,200 bucks maybe, depending on the size.
Be market rate. If it's done well, it'll be whatever it is.
Separate structure will be running probably 15 to 18, maybe more. That becomes non-affordable anymore. You could, you're better off to buy a house.
Well, if all of a sudden I do something that's decreasing the value of my house because it really is god-awful, it's, it's decreasing the value of my house and, and making it unaffordable for me to live there in my original house because all of a sudden I have a house that's, I've put as much money into as doing this, yet I'm getting half the value out of it. So if I want home equity or whatever to borrow to do it, I can't do that. It's decreasing affordability to actually attach in a lot of ways. You can look at it a lot of different ways, but from a form point of view, I, you know, I advocate smaller buildings that are in character with the neighborhood rather than creating duplexes or allowing people to just...
I just think of the towns that have been dealing with development, more intense development than we have for a long time. South Burlington and Williston come to mind. Well, Williston about the same time. They both have much stronger regulations. South Burlington doesn't even allow a two-bedroom accessory, they allow one. They only allow, I think it's 15-foot roofs, it might be 20. And they have a very small minimum size. And this is a town that is probably the pro-eminent in knowing what they're doing as far as development goes, except for the southeast quadrant, which even they are questioning now. But what we're doing is something completely different than the rest of the community is. And I, I just don't think it's, I think in the long run, it's going to be a negative, a huge negative. And you're saying, well, what difference does it make if that guy next door doesn't do it? Well, what if this guy moves because he doesn't want that environment? That's not why he came here. And that's why a lot of people come to Shelburne, they say, what a great town. I mean, they, look how nice it is, look, you wander through the neighborhoods, it's all going to change if you double up everything. You, you know, I think of Falls Road, there's, you know, those are nice old houses and you're going to take somebody's, somebody's been spending time, like, my brother's neighbor we were talking about earlier tonight, all the work that guy's put in his house, and you're going to slap something right in his backyard almost.
Which is always a risk if you have a property that...
It's not a risk if we have existing zoning, so it's not a risk now. We create that risk.
So hypothetically speaking, what if that neighbor, what if the neighboring property, somebody comes in, buys it, levels the house and builds something right outside the dude's window within the boundaries? Like, all of these scenarios could happen today.
They could, but we're encouraging it.
In my view, it's not protecting it.
We're encouraging it. That's what this does. And also, we're talking about other things, like, we can't enforce Airbnbs. If you have an Airbnb and it's an attached apartment and you're the owner, you're going to control that a little bit. And their question was brought up, and they said, well, only single-family homes have been complaining, but we're talking about creating 2,000 single-family homes. Who knows how many of those are...
Who's talking about that?
There's, well...
In what world do 2,000 new single-family homes come out of this?
It's possible, it's, as, it probably will be...
Do you want to go down that path?
No, no.
There's a lot of stuff that's possible.
There will be a lot of them, though, and there will be, if there are separate attachments, there will be Airbnbs. And then, neighbors don't have any control over that. Nobody does. That's just one, that's one argument. I don't know how it works in the Lake Shore overlay district. Is it going to effectively, the Lake Shore overlay rules will apply, I would assume, so they can't get closer to the lake.
Of course, all the rules will still apply.
And that is precisely the point. There are so many other rules that are in play here.
I don't remember.
Accessory apartments are allowed.
But detached? Yeah, they are.
That's a conditional use. And, and the thing, I guess, I, I don't, maybe the thing to do is to just conclude, because I don't want, I personally don't want Dick to feel like he's being...
Of course, yeah, yeah, not, not really a point.
But the thing, the factual thing I'm trying to understand as far, and I don't know if there's any point in, in asking it, but I'm tru, truly wondering, is it, does it matter, Dick, if the apartment goes into an existing barn? Yeah, does it matter if it's going into an existing barn as opposed to a new building?
Does to me, yeah.
It does to you. So if there's, you know, I, I get that you, you care deeply about the, the fabric of the existing neighborhood, and so I'm trying to imagine a situation where old Mrs. so-and-so, the grandmother, and no kids around and grandkids are 1,000 miles away, and she's in a position where taxes are a burden, and she thinks that if she could put an apartment in a, in the barn in the back, that that would be helpful. And I think that as a resident, you know, lifelong resident of Shelburne, you would have some sympathy for old Mrs. so-and-so and having her be able to do that. So I'm trying to get a handle on, do you think it's okay or does it, is it...
For existing barns?
Yeah.
Structures, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and, and that wouldn't have to be a conditional use?
No.
Okay. So that's the first thing I'm trying to get a handle on is if the concern is all separate structures or only new separate structures, that's the first thing. The tougher question I have for you, Dick, is you, you want these new buildings to go through conditional use review process, and I've mentioned this before, this'll be the last time I mention it. What, which of the conditional use criteria can you point to that would legitimately be the basis for a denial? And what I'm getting at is, is your...
I don't know that...
Just let me finish this part. And that is, is your reliance on conditional use real? Or is it kind of a, it's, it's kind of a, it's a gesture, but it's not real because if you make everybody go through a conditional use process and the neighbors come out and they think they can force the DRB to deny it, but the conditions don't allow it to be denied, isn't that kind of a setup?
The point isn't for denial. The point is so that somebody can go to the DRB and perhaps influence the DRB to say, you know, you could move that house, and you could move it over here. The DRB should have the ability to do that.
So what would be the basis for the condition then? What criterion in the regulations would be the basis for a condition that the DRB would apply that says, instead of having it be 20 feet...
Why do we have conditional uses now? What, what is the...
Conditional uses are allowed, Dick, so that there's assurance that the requirements of the bylaws are met. And that's why I'm coming back to, which bylaw requirement would the condition be? And conditional use, it's traffic, it's impact on municipal services, it's other bylaws, and it's this nebulous character of the area, but the law says that it's as, it's based on the purpose statement of the zoning district. And I defy you to find any purpose statement in our zoning regs in Shelburne that would justify that condition.
Well, my point is, I, I am not encouraging those buildings to be built anyway. I don't want to encourage them. I want them to attach. And I think that's what was, what the initial idea was, is to make these affordable, and they're less affordable if they're detached, first of all.
I disagree.
The driveways are longer, we have stormwater issues in town. I just, you know, I've gone through the arguments over and over. So I, I just don't see that they're necessary to increase the number of units that are being built, when we can add them. The one point I wanted to ask about too was, I agree with what Kate said about 1,500 feet needed if going to put a garage on and decks and porches. So I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't limit the residential size to 1,200 feet and then allow 300 for decks and garages.
Well, that's the way it's written now. If you look at it now, it's 1,500 and it would include the garage space, the decks and the porches.
Well, what if you don't have a garage or a deck, do you get to build 1,500 of livable space?
It would be bigger, yeah.
So, again, that's going against the affordability issue by creating larger structures.
You're also talking, and this is where I think for me, perspective is really important because if you're talking about the rural area, those arguments could apply and then maybe we focus on the rural area. But when you're talking about in the village and residential areas and that sort of thing, these lots aren't huge. You're not going to be able to create a 1,500-square-foot place in, in most of these lots.
And comply with the regulations as well at the same time.
Is Falls Road unusual in that those are like long lots? Compared to most of the residential neighborhoods, is the Falls Road area unique?
They are different in that they're older lots, and they are, some of them are long.
Can they go back into the woods?
Some do, most of them go over bank and...
But like in Davis Park, none of those, none of those lots would accommodate any additions? Or Holcrust neighborhood or older home?
Right, the stuff from the 50s and 60s is much squarer than these.
But would you want separate units to be put in those areas?
Well, right, but they wouldn't be allowed.
Davis Parkers or Holcrust are, they're, they're mostly set up here with very small side yards. No one would ever think of putting an accessory use, like, you know... No one would ever think of putting an accessory use like, you know, like here in the middle of the backyard and everybody has to walk around. I mean, nobody would think of doing that.
We should be conditioning that then. I mean, these are all things that we're not doing in this, this is a zoning change. It's not just a simple, it's, this is kind of a major deal.
I would, I would argue that, that allowing accessory uses to be in a separate structure would actually preserve the character of the Falls Road district. Because that is the pattern. If you think about, many of those lots have an old barn back there that, you know, is, is in various stages of condition. But that would, I think that would be a, a much better design outcome than slapping something on to an existing structure. Just volumetrically.
If, if you look at your old house that you grew up in, and your brother's house, that has the barn with this relationship already, it's not hurting the neighbor there. That's not going to be a problem. You mentioned that, that neighbor who's taking care of their house really well might not like the fact that there's a barn there. Well, there is a barn there. When, when you and I both did accessory buildings, we both made them attached. Now, we chose, both of us, not to do this, 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 whatever. We chose to do this or this.
My building wasn't built as a...
But it's a separate building.
It is a separate building.
And it's about to be an accessory?
Uh, maybe.
Okay. My point is we chose to do that. Now, why did we choose to do that? Because it was nicer for the neighborhood.
And I have 1.6 acres, so if I wanted to do a subdivision, I could have subdivided it.
But you didn't. And, and you chose not to...
And I wasn't building a house. I was building an office and a, and a place for a wood shop to go to. With eventually the idea that someday somebody else might want to convert it.
But somebody didn't make you do this or that. And, and why, when you chose for yourself not to do that, why, why are you making it harder for somebody else?
There are lots of people that have lots the size of mine that can still do that.
But why do you want to make it harder for somebody else to do the same thing that you and I both did?
I'm not making it harder for them, it's what it is now, Stephen. It's not that hard.
Harder in relation to what we're changing?
It's not like it's a, it's not like, it's a long drawn-out affair, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I guess fundamentally for me, and getting to Dean's point was...
I would move that we just do the vote for...
Yeah, that's fine, we'll, we'll skip it and...
Because I don't want to wait, I don't want to keep burning the time.
Well, if we do the vote and it doesn't change the hearing because we don't have people, then it's not going to make, it's going to be more time wasted, so we'll...
Is that a fact that we don't have?
I think so, because the next, the two meetings in March, there were going to be four or five people.
It's dicey.
And it was getting kind of dicey. Yeah, because I'm going to be out in March.
And one of them, I'm not sure I'll be back, I'll be traveling that day.
Can we warn for that day?
Go ahead. At least, if you want to ask me anything, you'll have to call.
Right, right. Yeah, that's fine. I, I think when, when I looked at the schedule earlier, it just didn't, I wasn't under the impression that we'd have numbers to make it go through and just didn't want to waste more time. But, and, and I do, I get that this is sounding kind of cyclical, but I'm, I'm hoping that these discussions are at least for all of us. I'm not, I'm not trying to direct this at you. Like, for me as well, it's been an interesting thought exercise to go through and think of the different scenarios and where this is applicable and the differences between the different districts. And in some places, I, I don't disagree with you. Like, in the rural district, I feel like there might be some more that we could add to this. In some of the other districts, with the understanding of perimeters and setbacks and all of that, I just, I, I don't see, we wouldn't have the scenarios of these big houses. And I think more of the situation, I believe this would apply to the Meñezes as well. Like, they wouldn't, in that case, they wouldn't have to subdivide. They could create a smaller accessory apartment on their same land and move into that and then rent their house, which would solve their problem.
Exactly. I think it's going to solve a lot of people's problem. I was just reading something the other day that said that nationwide, eighty percent of aging baby boomers are basically stuck in the suburbs. And they're rapidly realizing, you know, hey, this is the problem. My house is not set up for this, my neighborhood is not set up for this. I'm starting to be, you know, harder to, to get around by car. And, you know, it's, I think it's a crisis that's brewing. So the more we can, I think, enable people in, in our town to age in place by creating something that is moving out of the big house and creating something that meets their needs as they age and then provides options for, you know, I don't know, members of the talent workforce that the state would like to move here. You know, I, I think that, that will be beneficial.
Dean, how many accessories have we had?
An accessory apartment application in the last couple of weeks, it's like a couple, it's very few.
So we're solving a problem that really doesn't have demands?
Right, it's create, because, well, for one thing, the, the way that I look at this, any change takes a lot of time. And by the time a problem becomes significant, it's usually too late to change rules that will have an immediate impact. So similar to form-based zoning, there were years of meetings and back and forths and figuring out, okay, we're going to do this. And there haven't been, there hasn't been a ton of response to it, but that groundwork is laid so that there are options moving forward and you're starting to, people are starting to become aware of what is available and around. So it's not that things would change immediately, but this is a way to solve, or at least address several of the problems that we uncovered in the town plan, which is why, at least from my perspective and hearing the feedback from the Housing Subcommittee and then with you and Stephen both going and meeting with them, like, that's where I, I was thinking, okay, it's all been discussed, we're in a good spot. But now it's, the no-change thing, I think, is what I'm just trying to figure out, well...
Well, it's not no-change, because I do agree with, their original premise was they were going to just add two bedrooms to what we already had. And now it's changed to detached structures. It kind of complicates things, I believe. Anyway, if you're going to table, I will come up with some more. I'd like to show some of the regulations that other towns do. Maybe it'll give us something to think about in the meantime.
Yeah, well...
If people want to read it, if they don't want it, then it doesn't matter.
I know other towns, well, like Burlington, talking to the planner, Mary O'Neill in Burlington, they're right now looking at revising their regulations on accessory apartments to make them, just like we are, to make it more accessible for people to actually do them.
They're pretty strict.
I think the direction is, we're, we're going in the direction of, of making it more affordable and making it more accessible to do accessory apartments.
Towards being Burlington. Do we want to do that? That's...
Burlington's pretty nice.
It's an evolutionary, yeah, but do we want to be a city?
I think we want to make sure we've got enough people to use this beautiful new library and to keep our classrooms full and to make sure we can feel a whole team, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, and this is something that I learned just going through the plan. I mean, obviously, over time, if you have a place that people want to be, there's going to be more people there. And we have seen that there is that average growth that's happened, particularly since the, the boom in the, that ended around the seventies. And we had the average number of units per year that wasn't really a rule, but it was, yeah, we should stay within these guidelines towards growth to be a part of the greater economic area in Shittingen County and all that. And I just, I guess part of me, I, I keep waiting to hear and I'm not sure what to... Like, I'd like to provide the Housing Subcommittee with some more stuff to maybe think about, or are there considerations that have come out of this debate that might be worth adding in? Or how could we change language to address some of these things? And I think part of my frustration is I don't hear any of that, really. And, and I, I wouldn't know what to instruct them on. And then we just get back into that cycle again, so...
I think that both Susannah and Jason, you both touched on the idea that, you know, we, we want people to use the facilities that we're building. We want to have people to, you know, create teams. But also, I think we want to be able to have our kids not have to move out of the town in order to find an affordable place to live. And part of what this is trying to do is, is let people, and as one possibility, create that, you know, that house for their kid, or create the house for them, their kid moves into the house. Instead of, this is more like, the kid's going to feel like they're living in the basement of their parent's house for the rest of their life. Whereas I think we, we will serve ourselves better by giving our, our kids and other people a chance to be part of this town by, by making them separate and not have, not forcing people to move away. I mean, people already move away when they grow up and move out of Vermont. I mean, I'm trying to keep my kids here, you know?
And to, to that point, one thing, and I don't know if these are numbers with the nature of the stuff that you do that you could, that you could provide or if the Housing Subcommittee could, but I was intrigued when you were mentioning the cost of building a, a structure that, say, is twelve or fifteen hundred square feet and how that would translate into what rent is and that it's not affordable. I'd be really curious what those numbers might look like, because knowing what rents are like in the greater area, I, I don't think that they would be uncompetitive. They might not qualify as affordable, but that's when we're talking about twelve hundred or fifteen hundred square foot places that are two-bedroom apartments. Most of the places in the non-rural districts are going to be less than that because the house footprint in the lot either isn't big enough to allow it to be that big or the perimeter setbacks won't allow a structure of that size to be built. So to me, in the, it, it's, it's more of the infill type stuff and creating those, those spaces. And I did have in my head that it would create a more affordable rental environment. And maybe that's incorrect. And so I would really be interested in understanding those numbers, because that's, I think that's a valid point.
And I think also, when people do this kind of thing, build an accessory apartment, they're not thinking in terms of commercial real estate, where they have to have a return on their investment within ten years and, and so on. Their return is that they're increasing their property value overall. They can't all of a sudden charge $5,000 a month to rent a two-bedroom apartment, even if it costs them that much and they want a return in ten years or five years. They're going to still be subject to market rate on apartments. So affordability is what the market will, you know, create. Something that, whether it's here or here, it's still a big investment for people. And they're not looking at it in terms of most people, I think. Not saying, I've got to have this return, because their return is when they finally sell the property and they'll, you know, get much more later on, a lot of times.
My building is eleven hundred square feet. And I've been told if it were a two-bedroom, that I could probably get sixteen to seventeen hundred dollars in Shelburne. With, if it were a two-bedroom. I didn't want to do a two-bedroom, I wanted to do a one-bedroom. But I can't do the conditional use unless I have two bedrooms. I don't understand it, but...
You can't do conditional unless you do two? No, you can't do conditional unless...
Two bedrooms are a conditional use.
Two, right.
Right. But one, I don't qualify for because it's a different scenario.
Well, it's a permitted use.
Yeah. I don't think so.
I'm not sure I can follow any of that.
I think that's a side thing, I don't...
Yeah, it is. But anyway, so that's just, what I'm saying is eleven hundred square feet is a good-sized apartment for two bedrooms. It makes perfect sense.
It's a hell of a lot bigger than a lot of places in Burlington.
Creating a fifteen hundred-foot living space doesn't make sense.
Well, if you want to bring the number down, you guys can always talk about that, if you want.
But that's just one, that's just a point, but anyway.
And we could lower the number of square footage by, like, exempting from that square footage limit, porches and garages, or however we want to phrase it. But right now, as Kate was pointing out last or two weeks ago, that, that, that whole fifteen hundred square feet includes all those pertinent things to that house, like a porch or a deck or a garage.
Right, but what I'm saying, if they're not going to have those porches and decks and garages, then they don't need fifteen hundred square feet.
So who are, who are you, who are we, to say what space somebody should or shouldn't be living in?
Well, I'll go back to the premise that it started with, it's supposed to be affordable housing. Smaller homes are going to be less expensive. Are we really looking for affordable housing? Are we looking to just build more houses?
I challenge you to point out where this is a problem outside of the rural area. And I'd be happy to address it in the area where it might be a problem, but again...
I've already told when we started the meeting, we can have this debate continuously. I'm not changing my vote because I'm, I am convinced, I, I believe in what I'm saying.
No, your, your tactic is functional, it's just delaying and it'll...
I'm not delaying anything.
Well, the reality is...
I'm ready to vote.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
A friend of mine is thinking about building a tiny house, which doesn't really have a foundation. Is that included in this discussion?
Are they talking about it as in someone's backyard?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that would, that would be an accessory apartment. I mean, if it's, are you saying it's not on a foundation? Are you saying that it's a trailer?
No, it's not. The way she described it to me, it's, it's at her children's house that used to be her house. And she wants to move into it, and I think she's already been permitted for it. But she said it, it doesn't have to get dug into the ground, it's movable, but it's not a trailer. It's one of the new tiny houses.
Okay.
And I wonder if that's included in this ordinance?
If it's not, if it's not a vehicle, it's a structure and it would be something that gets a permit and it would be included in this discussion?
And I missed the beginning of this, so I'm sorry, but there's a restriction on things that are smaller?
It's, yeah, this is a whole bigger thing with accessory apartments that... We should probably move on?
Okay. I should have been here early.
We've had a few circles already over the last couple of meetings.
You're talking about?
Yeah.
But you did get a permit for it?
I think so.
So they must have enough land to...
I'm not sure. It's been a while since we've had a accessory apartment permit, but I'm, I'm not necessarily hearing it.
It was a while ago.
Well, yeah, I think, well, this is something, and I, I would be interested in if the Housing Subcommittee has any thoughts on this, this discussion. And just to take those things into account and maybe, maybe the path is we need to look at this more at a district-by-district level, because in some cases it might make sense and others it doesn't. But I don't think it makes sense to try and move this forward at this point, because I don't know what would happen at the hearing. So if there aren't any other comments, we can move on to the form-based zoning. And Dean, I saw in the, in the packet, so you, we had the red line from the last meeting. Did you have a, a preference in terms of just opening to discussion or going through a, or...
I, I didn't prepare any kind of presentation and I didn't really have any preference. The memo makes it clear that this is a continuation, basically, of a discussion that you started last time. And just before the last meeting, Kate had written up some of her thoughts, which she shared verbally, and I think I also handed out paper copies of. But I've had some time to go through and better... Sorry?
I have an extra copy, anything of definitions.
Okay, just, just continuing with that thought. So anyway, what I was leading up to is that I am getting a better handle on what some of Kate's ideas are for form-based zoning in the future. And I guess one of the things I would do is ask, what, what approach are planning commissioners most comfortable with? I don't know that there's a reason for the group, as a group, to go through the red line version. Unless, unless there's this general sense that you, as a body, are inclined to move forward with some version of the work that she's done for the planning commission? Or have you heard anything that Kate has brought up or anyone else has brought up that would have you think, well, gee, you know, let's, let's address topic X before we get too in the weeds with the document that Brandy has developed? Because if you start making, if you start considering any major changes, then that's going to cascade through the work that Brandy's done. So why spend all the time in the session doing that?
Definitely valid. There is a bit of a chicken and egg thing here, and just as a general comment, I, personally, I feel... I feel like a, like the Economic Development Committee-type concept would facilitate a lot, some more insight into the eventual direction that we're going, but for near-term, I appreciated the comments that were in here, and the work that Brandy had done already, and it had been deliberated, and it does make clear certain areas. It's, it's almost like an amendments package sort of thing. So I do think it's worth going through there, and if there's something specific that we might object to, then sure, we could discuss that, and if it starts getting overly complicated, maybe we omit that. But I think it, I think that there's merit to at least reviewing and pushing forward the, the changes that she had proposed, if that's agreeable.
Yeah.
And as far as the Economic Development Committee, I know that's a later discussion, but just so it doesn't overshadow this, I, I think that's something that's moving at its own pace, because there is, there's input from the Select Board, and they have a lot on their plate right now, so we're, we're just trying to work through how that might be created, and how that should best be done. So there should be more on that coming soon, but it wasn't ready for this week.
You know, just thinking about the Housing Committee, there's a lot of expertise right there on that committee.
They're all developers.
Those guys are, I know, but this is what we're talking about, developing.
That's true.
And I don't know if those guys would be interested in participating in some level or other, because they are, they're familiar with that corridor, and they're developers. That's what we're kinda looking for, I guess.
Right, and some of those, well, I see at least Brian was part of this focus group meeting, so I know that they're aware and involved. And if memory serves, I think we were previously, everything was ready to warrant for hearing, we just had to switch gears. I mean, we were at least really close.
You were, you were really close, there had been a punch list that was developed so that the project could wrap up. There were some things that were part of the original agreement that didn't get the attention in the end, that I think people thought they would see when the contract was first developed, but examples of those include, there was a memo having to do with public art, or how public art could be incorporated into the corridor, and that got kind of a superficial treatment. There were the handouts, the kind of marketing materials, which I believe are also in the packets. Those didn't get as much attention as I think they, they would've if we hadn't, she hadn't spent so much time on some of the other things. And I do, there is one kind of odd little piece that I went back and checked, and is not in her document, and I'll mention it, just so that we're remembering it. When the form base, when the zoning regulations were amended to address adult-oriented businesses a couple years ago, there was a, an amendment made to the form-based zoning that makes it clear that the regular, the regular zoning applies as far as adult-oriented businesses. So in other words, form-based zoning is not a way around adult-oriented businesses. And I went back and I checked on the materials that Brandy had done, and that package doesn't include this little piece. So that's, I've had a little note on my computer for a while that says, "Make sure Brandy's document gets the adult-oriented businesses piece."
Form-based adult-oriented businesses. Love it.
So, so, so like, yeah, like you're saying, it was close, you know, it was close, and it, you know, it could've been something that the commission moved towards a public hearing on.
Yeah, I mean, is it, I, I'm really not sure the best way to go through it. I, I don't know if it's just bring it up and quick scroll, I don't know if anybody had specific comments around any of the changes, because as far as the content of what was in here, I didn't have anything.
How many pages is it now, with her changes?
Well, in the, the thing you have to understand is, is that she's reformatted it so that the, you know, this, this red line version is not a fair representation. The version that she's pulled together in this new format is sixty-two pages.
So about twenty percent less.
Yeah. She's, she's found some efficiencies in the three-column design, and she's gotten rid of some redundant text that...
Well, the expert on the form-based zoning is you, Kate, and you've, I assume, gone through this, and...
Um, yeah, so...
I'd rely on your take on whether the improvements are all good.
I think that this, that this does help quite a bit, and we've put a lot of work into it, and I think it would, there's a lot of merit in, in, you know, considering, looking at it again, I haven't looked at it very thoroughly in a while, and, and then moving it forward. But I was thinking, I actually talked with Dean earlier today, about, you know, where do we go from here? And so the Healthy Living Project, that probably you guys read about in the Shelburne news like I did, was, you know, great to see, and, you know, I'm hoping that will sort of catalyze things. But it seems to me that, that just because the market demand has just changed so rapidly since we, I mean, we, since, since we adopted it, and even since Brandy's revisions, that you need to be sort of really clear-eyed about what kind of development this code is likely to incentivize. And I think, and I could be wrong, but I think it's, it's likely to be kind of two tiers of development, and the first is gonna be a lot of smaller projects, you know, reusing sites, adding infill, things like that. And then the second opportunity will be these, things like the Healthy Living Project, that are, are gonna be sort of like one-offs, you know, that, that come or they don't come. And so what I think this means is that the sort of urban vision that is in the code as, as, as we promoted it and thought we could achieve, is probably maybe unlikely to happen, and instead, we're gonna get development occurring in, in kind of enclaves, where, you know, there's a little bit of demand can support it. And so, and I think that that development is probably going to end up being more connected to the surrounding neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that surround it, rather than to, rather than doing anything transformational in the corridor itself. I'm just guessing. So, and that, so maybe the, instead of sort of this idea that urban elements, you know, streets and public realm elements could be the, the sort of architectural glue that holds it all together, maybe the holistic element that holds everything together could shift to a more landscape-based approach, that, and I'm thinking of, of productive landscapes, so constructed wetlands, you know, using stormwater utility to achieve a different aspect to the landscape spaces in the corridor. And, and so, and, and that would address one of our major goals, which was to create a better sense of Shelburne identity out there. So maybe we could use public art, and frankly, renewable energy devices, you know, in, in these sort of constructed wetland settings, you know, to kind of announce arrival to Shelburne. So...
Kate, how does the, the constructed wetlands with the stormwater utility work? Is that, once we vote to create a stormwater utility, it's funded by taxes, and then that money is used to create the constructed wetlands? Because I, I can't see a developer constructing a wetland for all of us, when it's probably gonna take away their buildables, square footage.
Well, the, the utility might be a way for certain parcels to kind of be incentivized to undevelop. You know, maybe it's just not realistic for them to be redeveloped with buildings, or more intensively developed with buildings, but they could realize value from their properties through a stormwater utility, that kind of, you know, it, it's a way to monetize ecosystem function, which we don't really have a way of doing right now. So I kind of sketched this idea out with a, an engineer, sort of stormwater engineer at VMB? Is that the big firm up in South Burlington? The, forgetting what it's called. Starts with a V, three...
VHB.
VHB. And he, he thought there, this sounded plausible, that, you know, it just, it hasn't been done, and he wasn't sure how well it would align with the state stormwater regulations, but he thought in theory that this was possible, and you, the, the mechanism would be a utility. So I'd have to go back and look at some of my notes on that. But anyway, it's just trying to, I, I just was trying to take a kind of more realistic approach to, you know, where do we go from here? Because you can, so, so I would advocate also that maybe we think about moving to one set of zoning regulations, rather than have this crazy situation where we have this, you know, two, and one is optional, and it's just, I think it's just kind of difficult. So maybe that would look like taking the form-based code and revising it with an idea towards kind of incorporating those elements of the underlying zoning that appear to make some sense, and that we could, and then reducing some of the requirements, like, you know, I don't know, building types and things like that. We've gotten feedback from developers that, just looking at something right here, that, you know, developers typically take a loss on first four commercial space, and I don't know if you've noticed, but there's, on Flynn Avenue, there was that building that was redone on the corner, across from, catty corner from the church.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was just noticing the other night, that commercial space on the ground floor remains unrented. So it, you know, if that happens on Flynn Avenue, I mean, it, you know...
Have to put the diner back in there.
Extrapolate to Shelburne, you know?
Red Roberts.
So, you know, that's something like, those are things to kind of provide some guidance, you know, and then maybe we don't, we don't really care so much what the buildings look like, we care more about where they're placed on the lot. I don't know, these are just ideas. But, but again, I'm just trying to think, how do we, the bottom line is, how do we turn this into an economically productive place, more economically productive than it is now? So what, what are, you know, what does, what does, you know, this look like viewed through that lens? You know? And I think we got some kind of guidance from the Vermont Development Conference, is a sort of a good springboard for, for doing that. And so, anyway, Perry, if you're out there, we're hoping that you consider reapplying to join the planning commission, and this can be your baby.
So we know that condos, two stories, aren't gonna work for anybody, so maybe we should automatically jack that up to three now, and maybe, who knows what, but that's one thing maybe we could do immediately, that might start something. The other thing is hotels, I don't think anybody's gonna build a hotel less than four stories. So if we allowed a four-story hotel with an underground garage, three-story, or five-story and with an underground garage, four stories without...
Overlooking a beautiful constructed wetland, maybe?
Yeah. Well, maybe that will inspire someone to...
Really cool public art everywhere.
To, because I, you know, they're starting to put hotels all over the place now, they're not just concentrating in Burlington and Williston. Maybe we could get one.
There's not enough Airbnb space.
Sorry.
Plenty. I'm having a day.
Well, there's also, and this is a problem that has been identified by others, we have a problem where, you know, we have the, you know, the top tourism venues in the state, and tons of weddings and things, and, but everybody stays, tends to stay in Burlington, you know, and there's a real relationship between where you stay, where, you know, the hotel where you're staying, and where you choose to have dinner. Yeah, we dine, so, you know, we, we're, that could single-handedly change our fortunes that way. I think there's something like, back in 2010, when I was starting to do the research on this, I think there was like over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand visitors annually come to the farms and the museum, so it's really leaving a lot of money on the table.
So is there an interim step? Like, that Brandy's revisions get incorporated into this, and then the next step is another revision a year or two down the road, once all this can get hashed out?
Yeah, well, what I'm, what I'm thinking is...
And maybe it gets combined into a single zoning regulation?
Yeah, and, and maybe we can even do something more, a kind of synthesized version of that. Maybe we can, if we can all start to go through this, just to get reacquainted with it, and maybe there's some stuff that immediately jump out as, "Oh, we could change this now." So we get, so we end up with her revisions, plus what other things that people seem, think are useful, and that's the first iteration, and then we start to move forward. Because like, one, you know, I mean, this stormwater idea that I have is great, but, you know, the Select Board has, that's all driven by the Select Board, and they haven't even started, they've, they've put that on a sort of deep freeze right now, you know, but they're gonna get back to it. So we have to sort of sell them on the idea that we should be involved, and why we should be involved, and how Route Seven can play this role. So we have, we have a sort of marketing job in front of us, you know, we have to talk to Chris Robinson, we have to get Lee, you know, on board, and, and then start talking to the Select Board. So that would definitely be, you know, something that would be beyond the scope of this, but I think we could kind of go through this, and, and I think there's a lot of stuff we could probably cut out of this, like, some of the building type stuff seems ridiculously sort of overwrought and not realistic anymore, frankly.
So with that, recognizing the, the size, is this something where, just for the next several meetings, we plan on forty-five minutes or an hour of discussion here, and just we methodically go through and address sections?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that sounds realistic. What do you think, Dean?
I, I think that it would be good to have some kind of idea of what topics you need to take up first. I think not necessarily starting, beginning and going to the end, I think some of the pieces will, will work through the document. Kate and I did talk, like she said, I think that the idea of removing building types as a requirement is something you could consider, but it's a pretty significant change that would have impact throughout the document, that we would have to track down all of those places, because the logic of the overlay is look at the map, figure out the character district, and then look at what building types are allowed, and then it flows from there. So if we take building types out of the equation, we need to put in a list of uses, or something.
Well, how about if we, we don't take building types out, and we just say, we find a way to look at the regulations and say, like, "These are some building types that you can build, but you don't have to." I mean, that, maybe that's easier, and then you don't have to bother with taking them out, you can just...
Yeah, then it might hold together that way, where if you, and you have an other category? So these are the kinds of things we would need to think through, and see whether or not...
Because I think that building placement is more important than what the building actually ends up looking like, particularly in that kind of an environment.
Yeah.
I wouldn't give up too easily on that, though. I mean, I think if you're trying to create a sort of constitution for what Shelburne will look like, I think if it's in there, maybe hold on, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I think when you, when you see things crop up that are really not attractive, and you think, "That is really too bad, that, you know, more enforcement wasn't in place for tractor supply," or there was a missed opportunity.
Yeah. When, when I think of some of the things that Kate's suggested in her note, and that she and I have talked about, as possible changes that could be... When I, when I think of some of the things that Kate's suggested in her note and that she and I have talked about as possible changes that could be dealt with, I think of things along the lines of changing the frontage zones. So Kate has mentioned the obstacles faced by people that would be told, you've got to have a two-story building and it's got to be an active ground floor use. I think removing the requirement for active ground floor use or revisiting where these frontage zones are. Maybe there's just one rather than three. But the frontage zones and active ground floor uses and the way the byline is right now, they're pretty closely linked. But if active ground floor uses is, is not a thing that you want to require, I think that's a pretty simple edit to get, you know, get them out if you don't want to make them requirements.
Would you do that? Would you just go back to residential?
Well, they're just, they're, you know, again, this is, removing it as a requirement would just mean that whatever building types are allowed in that character district could occur, but there wouldn't be this additional requirement that says, and there's a menu. So someone has the choice of building types within the character district. So if there is no frontage zone, then we no longer have an active ground floor use requirement because the active ground floor use requirements hinge on the frontage zone. Or maybe you still want to have the frontage zone, but you just, you have it do other things because that's not the only thing that it does. It changes the setback requirements and things like that. You could maybe leave those in place, but just remove the active ground floor use requirement. And just say that you do this building type and you may design it to look like this, but you are not actually required to have the active ground floor use in it if, if it's not attractive to anybody to rent that way.
I'm not an expert and that's one of the challenges of going through documents like this and then trying to make suggestions like that. I mean, it's like, my hunch is that retail isn't going so well these days, so let's change that. I'd rather have an expert tell me that that's true. And what, I mean, so working backwards, I'd almost rather know, when all these people say, I'm not going to develop in Shelburne, it's too cumbersome, it's too this, it's too that, it's too the other thing. I'd really like to know more about that first before painstakingly going through and making decisions that may or may not change those conversations going forward. So, I mean, I almost feel like this committee is more important. Find out what are the economic drivers, really, and, I mean, I know that that stalls everything, right? Because it'll take six to eight months to even kind of get that going, just to be told that actually a hotel would be a really smart thing. I mean, we know some of these things, but.
Doesn't have to take.
I'd like to know what are the problems? Why aren't people choosing to rent or buy the Surloin Saloon and make that an attractive building? That's a draw for people from far and wide or the Apple Motel. Like, I, I want to know, what's, what's the problem? So that we can find the answers. Because I feel like by doing that, I mean, some people on this commission know way more. And you've been so deeply involved with it for so long that you're, you know, 100 steps ahead.
And I agree. And that was partially why, for me, I think having some kind of economic development work or input is important to be able to go out and reach out to landowners and developers to get, using specific examples, like with the Surloin Saloon or the hotel, like all of those things. Is it a matter of whoever owns the land is either, they own a ton of stuff and they just don't think about it? Or are they holding out for a certain price point?
People want to build.
Natural area, right?
There are people who want to build hotels in Shelburne. We have to change that. If we could just do that one thing, let's do that now. Let's not even wait for the rest of this project.
Do we know that? Is that?
I know that.
So like Hilton Garden Inn would come to Shelburne?
Not necessarily. I know the people that own these, or some of these properties. And they are waiting. That's, they can afford to wait.
And they're waiting for higher height limits, you're saying, or what?
I'm saying yes. Let's raise the height limits for hotels, figure out what, what it takes. I'm thinking it takes at least four stories. If they're setback a little bit off the road, there's a couple of empty ones right now that are.
Well, and that, that to me is, is precisely.
Are you sure they can't do that already? Under form-based zoning?
I didn't think they could. I thought.
Well, if they're serious about locating a hotel on Shelburne, they, they might want to check in. But I'm not sure that.
What is?
The general commercial building type.
What's the height restriction at this point? Is it still in existence?
Wasn't it four stories?
I don't think it was. I thought it was like three and a half was the highest we had.
In current zoning or form-based?
Form-based. No, 35 feet, I think is.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Regular, isn't it?
Right. 35 sounds familiar.
So I think what would be the.
Four stories would be probably 50 feet at least.
So, so four stories is allowed in this building type, which is the general commercial type, which is the one that I think that a hotel would go in, in some, but not all of the character districts.
Which districts is it?
It's allowed in the, I kind of blow this up so I can see it. And she's, she's slightly modified the abbreviations. It's the BCCD, Business Commercial. So it's these two here. And so a change, you know, if someone's got a property that you know of and they're thinking, I would really like it to be four rather than three. Well, that could be a fairly easy change to make them be possible for stories. But it's at least possible in some districts or character districts now.
Dean, do you know of anybody who's come in to you to say, can I do this?
Hotels?
Or four stories or anything like that?
Not, not any time, not any time recently.
But that doesn't apply to residential, though, for that.
To residential?
Yeah, for condos.
Well, I thought you were saying hotels.
I did, but now I'm asking about condos.
Well, it depends on what type of building you want the condos to go in.
If they were a similar building to that and they were flats.
Well, residential may be possible in this one. So this is where it's getting hard for me to, to fly around in this. But this building type, if used for residential, accommodate general, commercial and office, and it's not intended. So this building type is not intended for residential. So the flux.
The other undefined thing that's holding up this thing from getting like really used is maybe people like you're talking about who can sit on their land and just think, well, I can afford to sit on it. I'll just sit on it for 10 years and wait for somebody else to, you know, come with a great idea that they think of and offer me a ton of money. And, you know, it, it's that kind of thing that it's hard to grapple with, with any kind of code or any kind of incentives.
Can I make a comment? Just thinking about hotels and the fact that people are constantly gravitating to downtown Burlington. In part, it's because there are a lot of hotels there. In part, it's also, I think, because of the walkability and the cultural assets as opposed to the daytime assets, which are the things that we have a lot of. And I don't, I'm not really very fluent in the form-based code. I haven't read the whole thing through and I'm not sure I understand where it's going. But I think that if there are hotels being allowed somehow or another, we have to provide the venues and the walkability that you can find in a place like Burlington. We don't have to become a city. But it seems to me that you want to be able to complement things that way. Just a thought.
So you mean, if we're trying to get people to stay in town and have dinner here, make sure that there's sufficient parking around the restaurants and that sort of thing?
Making sure there are more restaurants, more well-spread out, you know, more, have the capacity to be able to have those things. Which is interesting because when you're looking for ground floor use, that could be a great use for a restaurant, although not everybody wants to live above a restaurant. So.
But that could be offices, though.
Yeah. But it's just a thought that somehow or another, to be, be able to provide that kind of environment where people who are staying in a hotel don't have to get back in their car at night. And they can get from.
One, one of the places where we have active ground floor or frontage zones, where the active ground floor uses are required, is, is down in the, the area where, you know, healthy living is intending to go in.
What page is that?
It's, well, I was just looking at the, the overall regulating plan. Yeah. So, so down in there. And so, you know, that, that's an area that is technically potentially walkable to the village, you know? So.
Oh, that's the rice.
Yeah.
It says jelly now, says rice.
Yeah. So, you know, that would be one area where having active ground floor uses would seem to, you're kind of creating like a little node there that would make some sense. But we have, as Dean was saying, we have two more further north on the corridor. So, you know, we were trying to kind of leverage the existing neighborhoods there and kind of create little sort of nodes. But maybe those can be modified or we can somehow tweak those requirements so that it's a little more flexible. Because right now, it's, that's, that's the area that has like a lot of little small places right now. And it also has some kind of interesting views of the lake. You're a little bit higher up there. And so that actually might be something that is, you know, maybe more appealing, because you're also around all those neighborhoods, for, for housing. And I think, was that the area that also there was, the soil had really good perking up in that area? Is that?
I was looking at that map today. There is an area that is just outside of the Monroe Brook watershed that has some good soil, good infiltrating soils. And I'm trying to remember what that was focused on.
I think I remember Amy saying something about up in that area, there was.
There's one, there is one spot that is on the west side and then it spills over into this, the Monroe Brook.
Kate, you mean it starts creating a wetland there?
Yeah, but also, but also just a place where we might, again, looking at things through the lens of sort of stormwater infiltration capacity, that that might be a place where we really, we look at the, the lot coverage and we reduce it, you know, to incentivize things on smaller footprints so that we can kind of harness that inherent infiltration capacity of, of the, of the soil. And, and if that could become a place that maybe shifts to be more residentially oriented, I mean, that could be a really nice amenity to live next to. Sort of make up for the fact that you're on Route Seven, you know? Views of, of the Adirondacks and the lake and stuff. And, and those lots are a little bit higher up, you know, from the, they're not quite at grade with the road, I think. And they're deep, some of them are deep and skinny. I don't know, it could be.
Yeah, one of the, one of the areas of the better infiltrating hydrologic Group A soils is, is right around here in this area of Wild Rose Circle. And so it is just kind of interesting. This is the Colette's Building.
Oh, okay.
And there is.
Which is totally paved.
It's totally paved. But there is, Wild Rose Circle is a private road. And this, so you look at this map and you wouldn't realize, yeah, there's a road that goes right through there, but it's private and it's on this lot. And so there's effectively this southern lot here. And that's open. That's not developed.
Can I ask an off, the, does, do you know what the future of the bowling alley is?
Do I know what the future of the bowling alley is? No.
Aside from not being a bowling alley anymore?
Somebody else might do it and you never know. It's just a rehab.
That's a shame.
They just, they just don't want to bother. They don't want to do the rehab.
Oh, they're closing? Oh, really?
They're retiring.
So the owners of the alley don't own the building and the building needs repairs and.
Had a lot of fun there back in the day.
So there may be a set of, there may be a set of ideas, like make it possible for four-story hotels throughout the corridor and simplifying or removing active ground floor uses, those kinds of things. If they're really clearly defined, then I think we can pull out the Brandy draft and see how we would need to modify it to do those things. It would be nice to have that list of four or five priorities and, you know, at some point, so that you could then attack her document with them. I did want to just quickly say a little bit about the stormwater idea that Kate's raised, which is a really important idea and a good idea. I wanted to help people understand one thing about the stormwater utility or what it will do or why it would do it. And this, this is a map from a document called the Flow Restoration Plan. This is Monroe Brook, Route Seven is here. And I was showing earlier a list of projects that had a total price of $4.7 million. This M1 through M35, $4.7 million. You may have heard that figure before. These are, these are projects, so this is a list of projects that would have that cost that this study shows would bring us into compliance. Right now, Shelburne is under a permit that basically says the Monroe Brook watershed has a characteristic. When the water flows are low, they basically are too low. And when they're high, they're really too high. So this permit requirement imposes on us a requirement to bring down the peaks, to lower the peak flows and try to bring up the low flows. And what this list of projects that I just had up was developed to do is to bring down those peak flows. And that list does it. If all of those projects were completed, they would bring us into compliance. And so this plan was adopted or will be pursued so that in 20 years' time, and we're on year 16 or 17 or something like that right now, we can say we've met the requirements from the Monroe Brook. I made the point to Kate earlier today that the stormwater utilities, people that are working on it, realize that they've got this to-do list. And so other ideas, projects to do, you're going to have to get to the people who are creating this to convince them that there are not necessarily, there are other projects or other, yeah, things that would benefit the town that are beyond this list. And I just think that you have to start selling that idea. Now, that list of projects, it may be that in some cases, a developer will do them. You know, it'll somehow work out that a public-private partnership will come up. But it's, it's the priority. That's why I was thinking maybe having Chris Robinson here. It's their focus. And so these ideas that we're talking about, creating a wetland, there's, there's a gravel wetland project right on the border of Shelburne and South Burlington that's been taken, it's like five years to get that done. And I forget what the budget is, but it's substantial, so.
Well, maybe a way to start, Dean, is to actually take this map and overlay it on top of the regulating plan and see how it lines up.
Yep.
And, and, and that would be a way to say, gee, are we calling for intensive, like, one of those frontage zones, for example, right smack in like ground zero for major, you know, projects that need to be addressed? It, it could be that we are. And, and that could be a way that sort of informs decision-making on next steps with the idea that the, the, I don't know what's happening at the intersection with Long Meadow Drive. But, you know, that, that, maybe that becomes a little, little node that is more valuable from an economic development standpoint for, you know, to encourage intensive development there. Proximity to the village, you know, you've got this kind of very sort of high-class kind of tenant that, or landowner that's coming in and making this investment. The goal's to eventually put the fire and rescue there. So, you know, that, that might supersede using that area for prioritizing that for stormwater. But it sounds like there would be many other places that could offset that in the ag. that in the aggregate, you know, you have to kind of think in the aggregate. And I think that would be ultimately more effective than making it really hard for somebody to develop a little tiny lot because we're requiring them to do all of this stormwater, you know, um, management on a little tiny, tiny uh, spot, you know? I mean, maybe instead you, you give them, you ins- you say, look, um, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, if, if, if you uh, um, you know, go, go up another story or something like that, we'll, we'll give you a density bonus or something to reward them for less intensively using the lot. But maybe that would be a way to start and we, and that could kind of give us an idea of like, where, like, lot coverage.
Yeah.
Is, is not uh...
What is the green?
Supporting this.
So, so in these, these different colors are showing places where it's either going to be a new project, um, or a retrofitting of an existing project. And so the um, the light blue, yeah, so here, I'm just trying to, yeah. The light blue is basically um, a retrofit, so it's, it's, so you know there's a stormwater pond um, near Kinney's, right? You know, you pictured it. So that's this M O, or yeah, M8 location. And what the consultants that worked on this um, have investigated is the possibility of making that stormwater pond be larger and have more capacity. And one of the things that I can remember that, in reading, is that...
And look nicer, I hope.
Well, one of the things that wasn't appreciated is that the area that flows into that evidently is larger than had been ex- originally calculated, but this particular project would benefit a pretty large area. It, and it's basically kind of making up for past sins, um, because it's already developed and there wasn't a lot of stormwater management required as it developed. And what Kate's saying is interesting, because if there's a lot of redevelopment in this place, I'm not sure that we'll actually see more lot coverage than we do today. We probably won't.
We probably will see less because they can share parking.
Yeah, so, so this project here that's intended to address past ills, um, is going to be beneficial to this area where right now, more water runs off than really should, and that's what's contributing to the peak. And the green area, I think that's the one where there was no change, right? That's where, um, an example, yeah, so that basically, um, like an auto master. And then there are some places where there isn't something currently, but maybe we could locate it. But my point in bringing all this up is that, um, there's already this $4.7 million list of, of projects that um, is going to be kind of the first priority for money from the utility. And so if somebody says, hey, let's create a stormwater facility that would make it easier for people to develop in the future, it's going to cost money. And then the other thing is, I'm not sure that maybe we aren't already doing some of that here.
We are, the projects are being done, it's just that the, the stormwater utility didn't get, which was basically a way of funding it. So we're just funding it now through taxes instead of...
And, and the last idea to just throw out is that, you know, um, you can look at having stormwater treatment um, in the same way that if you're trying to, the Housing Subcommittee had Michael Monte from CHT join them the other night, and one of the things he was saying is that, you know, one way to, to make it easier for affordable housing to be developed is if the water and sewer is already in, well, you know, we might see more development if we want to spur it. If the water and sewer is already in, well, the water and sewer is already in. But if the stormwater was in too, um, that's this idea I think Kate's getting at, it's just finding a way to fund it. Um, and then the whole system of regulating stormwater isn't really geared towards it being dealt, the, the stormwater being managed someplace far away. It's typically addressed on the site, so we'd have to kind of get over some regulatory barriers there. I just wanted people to know that this is the list. And as far as the corridor is concerned, it's, it's not all the same, because the area on the north is outside of the Monroe Brook, so it doesn't have the regulatory stick that's kind of driving us to, to, to act and do things. And the same thing down on the southern end, although you get pretty far to the end before you leave the Monroe Brook.
With, with all of those projects that are out there, and I think you're right, uh, socializing these types of things with Chris and understanding where there might be overlap, it, it just, I'm wondering, are there, not being entirely familiar with that world, are there potential grant opportunities from a municipal perspective? If we said, we have this idea of creating a node, it's going to help consolidate these projects, it's going to solve a much bigger problem and can be a showcase?
I, I think the answer is yes, but those, those are the kinds of things that he, he knows about, I don't.
Right.
Yeah, we've gotten, the town has gotten um, grants, including some funding to help set up the utility.
I think, you know, I think that we can sell this as something that could be templated in other places.
That, that's where I was going, because even...
Water quality is driving everything now.
It, it is, and, and recognizing just in the state, the staggering numbers that are involved. And we had a couple of nodes along Route seven proposed where, that you've talked about. And it just strikes me as, if there were an opportunity to, to get land and tie it into, hey, we've got this $4.7 million thing that's solving all these other issues, like, that could really prove as a model.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the idea of a frontage zone, maybe, you know, we've been thinking about it as, you know, retail and active ground floor uses and stuff, well, maybe it, maybe it, we think about it as, you know, uh, rain gardens. I don't know, you, you know, you, you re- rethink.
Yeah, I feel like there's opportunities to just get...
Right development, right place, and what does that look like, you know?
So that would be a good thing. I, I don't know if that would be a, have a couple of commissioners to get together with Chris or have him come to a meeting or...
I was thinking the latter, but...
Sure.
However, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also just thinking his schedule and coming out at nights and stuff, I don't know what.
Well, it would be great to have Lee um, here too, because I think Lee is very good at this kind of stuff as well.
Can I restate this to make sure I'm understanding? Is it sort of like, if someone wants to develop a piece of property, the stormwater management on that property doesn't make a lot of sense, but they could like, pay into a different property where it makes more sense and sort of help to fund the town or other development, kind of create a pool of money so that the town can purchase that practical property and create this attractive stormwater management?
That could be one, one way to do it.
It's like a credit system.
Off-site, um, stormwater management, yeah. Because just like, you know, water doesn't observe political and property, property boundaries.
Who had to create some road that wasn't necessary on his property, and we talked about, well, what if he put that money towards extending the bike path somewhere else?
Yeah, exactly.
Same idea?
It is, it is, actually, that's a good analogy, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just that the stormwater regulatory system isn't really set up like that. Like I was saying, it's generally speaking that if you, if you're below the threshold and you don't have to worry about meeting the requirements, well, then life is good for you. If you get into the regulatory system, you're generally having to do your development in a way that makes the after-development runoff not more than the pre-development runoff. And, and that's just the kind of default position. And if, I think it would be more attractive and easier for people to develop if, if there was an easier or an alternative path. And I just don't know that that alternative path is going to be very easy. If you think of it in terms of like, pollution treating...
Right.
Pollution credits or things like that.
That's our very own cap and trade system.
I love the idea of having that visual identity where it could also be a recreational space.
I, I mean, I think these could become, um, at, you know, really nice amenities that, that would be attractive to, you know, live next to or could incentivize some of the development that we want to happen, a restaurant or overlooking a pond or... There's some really interesting work that's being done in other parts of the world. And, you know, it, it's kind of being driven by in, you know, on the Vanguard are places that are really very impacted by rising seas and things like that. And um, um, so anyway, it's, it's, you know, it's just kind of adapting um, an idea that is, is happening elsewhere.
So a list of five priority things, do you want to try to develop a list now? Do you want everybody to commit to submitting at least one idea for a priority change and then next time, that can be the focus?
I didn't capture all of them, but we had the uh, hotel height, the stormwater management. I mean, do we just want to, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I want to know what the biggest stumbling blocks are for people who've been trying to get projects started. And I wouldn't know the answer to that.
Well, right, like, right now, we only let four stories in certain places, in, in pretty limited places. Maybe, Dick, you could take a look and sort of scout out where you think would be places where this could, this would make sense to have also.
I don't know where the areas are now.
Right now, they are in uh, the special uses, which is basically like the Precourt's Farm, um, and the um, uh, and, and in the uh, the business campus, which is, you know, the ind- sort of commerce and industry.
So the purple or the brown?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, like, one, one thing that's kind of interesting is, I mean, could that econo lodge be incentivized? Right now, they, that, that's like a, a fake upper floor, right? Because that was illegal?
Actually, they put the units in, but they were never allowed to use them, as far as I know. But they are there, aren't they?
Yeah.
I think that got changed.
Did we alter change that?
I know that...
So they are using it?
I know they filed a lawsuit about that originally.
I thought they lost, but maybe not. So we don't know if they're using them or not?
Uh, I'm not remembering, but I remember that when there was the sale, there was investigation as, uh, to the compliance. So they wouldn't have bought if there had been a violation.
Right. So that did sell?
That's the, yeah, there, that is no longer in the same ownership.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Is it still a hotel?
Is it still what?
Is it still being used as a hotel?
Yeah, as far as I know.
The econo lodge, the one that's across from where Bonus was?
Yeah, the tall, the tall thing. Sort of odd-looking tall thing with the...
So that's already in that district? So they, they could theoretically go in and get that approved with Form Based Zoning now?
And add two more stories to it.
Just, just to change and get the upstairs if they haven't got it already.
Undobchuk's used to own land that was in, I'm not sure, actually, they still, Undobchuk's still owns some.
They own a house down on the lake, I think.
Well, we, I'll, I'll investigate, but the Undobchuk's may still own land that's both in the teal and in the brown.
They owned a lot that was in the rear, um, that went into the commercial commerce and industry.
Yeah.
Because they attempted to change it to um, to whatever it was on, out front, but I don't know if they ever got that far with it.
I like the idea of coming up with, uh, each of us coming up with something for next meeting.
And the idea would be priority ideas to address here that could be potential quick wins or changes to implement?
One of those areas in the back somewhere become a parking garage, maybe we could get grants for it and sort of a community, a community uh, partnership with someone to, that would, you know, so people could come to Shelburne, drop their car and get in the shuttle, do whatever they wanted to or... And I don't know if it's feasible or not, but...
To address Suzanne's question or concern, um, how, how do we go about, like, hearing from the people who would know about this thing, that, you know, what's not working and why?
To me, it's complete chicken and egg. It's the whole concept behind the Economic Development Committee and...
Well, I, I mean, I just wonder, Dean, if your institutional history, do you, what are some examples of people coming in saying, I want to do this, and the answer is, eh, no?
Well, some, I mean, as far as Form Based Zoning is concerned, some of the things that I've heard, I've reported um, before, like the um, the concern there was about the 24-unit cap in the multifamily. So if there was um, a higher number, that was something that we've heard. Um, and now I'm drawing a blank on what some of the other ideas were, but um, I mean, I can think of some folks who've been looking at the corridor for a while through the lens of Form Based Zoning. I'm thinking of Patrick O'Brien, um, yeah, so he's someone who's been involved with development and he would have an opinion about what has been attractive or not attractive. Um, I'm sure if I, you know, leave here, I'll come up with a two or three other names, and they might be willing to come and talk to you about it from their perspective.
Man, I do remember, I don't remember what he was, I don't know what he was referring to, but there was an attorney at that session that you led from, I believe Downs-Racklin, who talked about neighbors and Shelburne being problematic and, you know, really standing in the way of development. And I have no idea who his clients might be.
Yeah, I think Scott, it was probably Scott. Scott, who lives in Charlotte, who may be watching us.
Tall guy.
Yeah. And he, Scott has represented a lot of folks who've done residential on the point, so maybe his concerns are valid, but I don't know that he's had that in the corridor.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know what he was talking about, so I feel like there's information out there that we should, it would be nice to know.
I, yeah, I mean, I, it would be interesting to get some feedback and we could sort of market it as, you know, hey, we're sort of open for business here, we're trying to, you know?
Well, this, this all ties into the sense of place that we're, in the plan that we're looking at building, and there, there does need to be coordinations with those. And I, I feel bad, because I, maybe I'm part of the problem, because I keep repeating that I had, over the last couple of years, had conversations with various developers and when they told me about a project, say, in Winuski, and I said, well, I'm just curious, did you ever consider Shelburne? Not that you would, but I'm just curious. And he said, oh, yeah, I know, they don't, don't do business in Shelburne. Like, it's, it's that kind of thing, and I think it's because there was an aversion to the permitting process and points that have been brought up in the various meetings. So it's more...
We have a rep for being difficult.
Yeah.
I, I certainly have that sense, and I don't want to perpetuate it by continually saying that anecdote.
Another example, um, that's current, but it's not in this area, is what's going on in Artisan Village. There are constant complaints from them about how difficult it is to work in Shelburne. And I think...
From whom, I'm sorry?
Artisan Village.
Artisan Village.
Yeah, and that's the southern part of the corridor. But I think that people also, and it's stuff that we talked about in those economic development meetings, that people don't understand that when the zoning is not as they would like it to be, that there are remedies to that, that you can come to planning and you can discuss what, what your challenges are. And for some reason, some of the developers just aren't willing to do that. Uh, because I know we've been trying to work with folks at Artisan Village for months and over a year to just say, you know, don't just keep coming back with what you want. Figure out how to address what you want and, and how to work on it. So I just offer that. If there were a way to encourage folks like that to come here, you might get some answers also, you might not like them.
My contribution from the standpoint of institutional memory is that, is as Gail described. I guess I'll just leave it at that.
No, doesn't mean no.
Is that green area on the west side at the bottom of the page?
The green area on the bottom of the page?
Bottom of the page, next, there's, um, you know, the, the development's in the back, the two circles, the donuts.
Okay, so that's the Yudle property?
Right.
Right here?
Right. And so what is that green effectively doing? Is that...
So that's the green quarter, and this is actually something else that I had meant to mention. Um, it is the one district within, character district within the quarter that fronts on the quarter that pushes things back a bit. And so you see this line here, it's um, bigger than here, and it basically pushes, this idea of pedestrian scale um, is modified because as a result of the process that produced this reg, says, this is a quarter, we want to maintain more of this open field.
I think that's not a bad idea, if we could, what they can continue to do, what, what else they can do behind the line, correct?
Yeah, the, that's right. The, and so here's another, because, because this is a property that we've had, you know, we've had a lot of questions about how Form Based Zoning might work. we've had, you know, we've had a lot of questions about how Form Based zoning might work, and I think, I think it's one that we could see a Form Based zoning application. This district tells people, unlike others, you've got to push things back 100 feet from the edge of the right-of-way. Then, when we have situations like this where it's next to what's called the protected zone, there are these additional buffer requirements. And there's also this plane, the bulk plane, that is intended to keep tall buildings from shadowing over onto residential areas and things like that. It's actually not that big a problem, but I think some people might look at the regs and think, "Oh, well, gosh, I have to, I have to have this additional buffering behind me because it's residential." And there, there really aren't that substantial, but it's kind of a perceptual thing, and if you could make it clearer that, I mean, I think you have to make it clearer to both the residential folks and the developers that it's, it's going to provide the kind of buffering that the residences want, but it is not going to be impossible to meet. But that's a 100-foot setback, Dick, so this, this, this lot is probably 300 feet.
It's got a five-acre lot, I think it's.
I think it's about a five-acre lot. So you were working on the list, and you, or you had a good start on the list?
Yeah.
And you want to know?
Yeah, I interrupted. Go, go with the list.
So, so what's our, what's our list?
Condo height.
Condo height. So is that, is that Dick? Dick does that one, maybe? Can I say that? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Take that one. Let's see, Dean is going to remember what sort of, like, complaints he's heard from people who, about the 24-unit cap, for example, stuff like that, feedback he's gotten. I guess I will look at things, try and look at things through the stormwater lens and see how that makes a difference. And...
Ground floor active use.
Yeah. Do, do you want to, do you want to sort of think about, or just look at building types generally, and, and if, if, if we're just being too, just how well you think they fit, or if they could be better, or...
I'd be glad to look at that. I think that's a big topic. I don't think I'm the only one that needs to do that. I think others can do that, too.
And if they're built so that the space could be converted to commercial, I mean, just high ceilings and let them do what they want.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just adding more, it's like, how do we bake in more flexibility to this thing, you know, so that things can change over time?
It's not necessarily something that would go straight in here, but I was planning to follow up with Lee and Jerry and, and Dean around just the whole economic concept.
Okay.
How do you mean economic concept?
Like, the Development Committee or a position, or, like, there have been people on the Select Board that have initiated some things, and we were talking about potentially creating a subcommittee, but we don't want to step on their toes, so it's just more getting things aligned.
Yeah, just how you would, do you re-advance that in a way that makes everybody happy?
And getting input from them to see if they're aligned with the reasons that we have as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And, I don't know, Susannah, did you have any strong things jumping out at you in terms of what you wanted to?
No, I just like to ask questions.
Well, how about just come up with some questions to ask? That would be very helpful.
I think I also just need to get more up to speed on the previous work that's been done on this as well.
Yeah.
There is certainly an element of, it's not small.
Yeah. Well, and then, you know, that can actually be very useful to be asking questions as you can become a little bit more oriented towards it, because we've all been looking at this thing. I mean, a new set of eyes is, was very helpful.
I suspect Andrew's probably in the same boat, just, because we kind of jumped in when it was plan-writing time.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder if it's worth looking into the type of business that we might be trying to encourage to come to Shelburne, because one of the things that I think distinguishes Shelburne is that it's a small town with small locally-owned businesses. You're not getting your big chains that you're finding in a, a big downtown. And if there's a way to, to hear from small entrepreneurs who have their own businesses, because it's what they're interested in, about what they think the challenges are of developing in Shelburne, and what might encourage other people to be able to build the village out more, so that maybe some of those small downstairs spaces would get built at some point. Because it's what differentiates us from downtown Burlington or from some other places, the big malls and places like that. Just a thought.
Yeah. You know, and I'm thinking, one of the things that's kind of interesting about the, the healthy living rice lumber area is it's about, you know, it's about as equidistant, maybe not quite, but close to, the relationship is similar to the relationship to Shelburne Green, to the, in distance-wise, to the village, you know, and it, it's, I mean, I could see it as, and that's what we've been really hoping to do, is that's just happened so organically and successfully, you know, how do we, how do we translate that to Route 7 North?
Yeah, and I think... I think that down at Shelburne Green, for instance, they're still having trouble filling some of the spaces. And it may be because of some of the zoning regs or some of the history. But that has a thematic kind of, a thematic kind of theme. It's about food and beverages and, and that kind of thing. And maybe there are other thematic areas, you know, the village has the cooking store and the candy shop and the place where the family, and the toy store, and all of those things. And so maybe there are other kind of nodes where some of those things can be combined, or maybe you want to have different nodes that have different thematic places.
And this is why, I'm not, not trying to sound obstinate here, keep coming back to it, but I, that's why I would like an official look at this through the lens of people that are actually from these industries and know, like, they have absolute input, because otherwise, it's potentially seven people throwing out ideas that may or may not align, because the public input, thank you so much for being here, but is pretty limited.
It's, it's interesting that SBPA has decided to have its next meeting, I think it's at the end of March, and we're having it at the Vineyard, and the theme they decided to do was to talk with people who have recently developed in Shelburne and found out, and find out why and when they want to do it. And it would be great if we could have representatives from, you know, from town offices and from other town committees there.
Yeah.
That sounds perfect.
To be able to build some of that collaboration and, and cross-committee communication and to get that feedback, both from people who have tried to do things and people who have successfully done things. Because it turns out that most of the time, you invite people, and the people who, who are already doing it show up, but the people who want to do it and are having problems don't. But the people who have done it know what they want, what they've gone through in order to be able to achieve what they have.
That's a public meeting, and when is it?
Yeah, it's the SBPA meeting, and I believe, let me check so that I don't give you the wrong date. I think it's going to be on the 22nd of March. There were a lot of people who are on vacation, so it's going to be up there.
And while Gail's looking at that, noting the time, the, there was a section on the Economic Development Committee, which, there's good material in there. I, I mean, I had some thoughts and stuff, but I don't know if, for one, if we're in a spot to move on with some of those assignments that can then help facilitate discussion next time. And if we are, I don't know, unless there are specific comments, how much time we would need to spend on that, because I think there's more information that's going to be coming out as well.
When is our next meeting?
The 21st.
I'm not gonna, I'm going to be out of town almost entirely.
It's not the 20th, it's not the 22nd, it's on Friday.
18th, wasn't it, or 19th?
What's that?
Next meeting? No.
No, it's the, the Thursdays were the 7th, the 14th, and the 21st, and we skipped the 14th.
I'll be back, but I won't do...
It looks like it might be the 25th.
I won't be here, but I won't be doing much while I'm gone.
I think so.
And I, that could conceivably change, but I think right now, it's the 25th of March. It's a Monday night.
25th of March?
I think so.
So as far as the next meeting, you're, you are still five?
We are five. It does appear that, well, four, if Dick's not going to be here.
I probably will be here.
Oh, you probably will be here, okay.
But I'm traveling most of the time, so I won't be much...
Right. Well, and maybe we just get into the administrative stuff now, because, yeah, I'm, I'm out for both of March, and we'll have just gotten back for the 11th.
Yeah, the 28th is a travel day for me, too, so I don't know when I'll get back.
So we may, yeah, I need, I need to, I certainly need to check in with Andrew. Did he indicate that he might not be at one of those meetings in March?
I thought maybe he had, but maybe he's gone through and updated.
I wonder, because the consideration there would be that I'm definitely out, and if he were to miss one of those two, then we would need somebody official to...
Yeah, I think that's changed.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't, I thought I saw a zero for one of those two.
I am planning to be here for those March meetings.
You are?
Good, good.
Add me.
In, in the way things go, as far, I know announcements have been made and suggestions go out and stuff, but as far as, like, in this case, it seems spot. Do you know of anybody that has come forward?
I don't.
Okay. So we probably won't...
It's not on the draft agenda for the Select Board for Tuesday that I just saw, so...
Yeah, I didn't, I saw it for another committee. So they don't have anybody. Okay.
Was there some movement, or are you talking about to fill seats?
Yeah.
Was there some movement on the Select Board's part that the committees would meet people before the Select Board?
There was talk about a process like that, but I don't, I don't remember exactly how that was going to all play out. I'd have to go back.
Yeah, is, I, I do feel like that is, well, good that we'll have quorum in March. As of now, April could get complicated, or we might still have quorum, but it'd be the same numbers. Well, I guess as long as we have that, we don't need to do it. Is there a temporary way that if Chair and Vice Chair, for some reason, aren't at a meeting, that there's a...
You could, I mean, I've seen, I've seen times when a situation like this was going to happen, and the Chair asked a person, a specific member, to be the one who would chair the meeting, and you got the consent of everybody.
Yeah, Kate and I both chaired in the past, so...
Okay.
If either of us is here.
Yeah.
Sure, happy to, yeah.
All right. All right. Then if, yeah, anything else around scheduling thoughts?
No, no. Not for the next two. It's really going to be the, as far as the development of the agenda, do you want to be dealing with things electronically? Are you able to?
I'll be completely offline, off-screen.
Completely offline, okay. So the, the, so we need to get to Andrew before too long to just make sure he's part of, you know, he's going to be able to work on those agendas and get them, and we have a schedule for meeting.
It's been on my list to reach out to him. I think maybe we could have a, we could pull him in, maybe you as well, and touch base early next week or something, and just plan out a little bit.
So, just, just wanted to ask, Dean, is the redline version of the regulations, is that something that can be made? Maybe it already has been made available electronically so we can look at it at home?
The redline version? I thought I had emailed that.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, did you? You had emailed it?
I thought so. Yeah, and just again, keep in mind that it's, it's an, it's not all the way through the end of the project. She was maintaining two separate documents, and then she kind of stopped doing that. But, yeah, if you don't have it in your email, let me know, and I'll send it again.
That's possible.
You can't miss it if you see it. There's a lot of red.
Okay, okay.
There is that.
It's just helpful to see what the starting point was, and, you know, what, what, what has been, what does revision mean, you know, up until now?
So at least there's a loose plan, and I, I think that we just need to acknowledge that there's a little bit of fumbling through this process, because we have the, I mean, hopefully, the plan will, will be approved Tuesday after that public hearing. We have this work, so it's good that we're moving forward with ideas. And it, it sounds like the, the general idea of seeing what we can update in here, and then, at some point, there will be a colossal effort to compare the current regs with these and look for opportunities for consolidation, or what we need to pull from the old into the new.
That will be a...
So there's that kind of, that's not a small thing.
Did we get feedback from the Select Board?
On...
On the hearing so far, on the plan?
Yes. Yeah, I was there, there's, there...
There was no comment.
There was no comment.
No.
It's just so much better than what we had before. I think people are like...
Actually, there was comment, there was, and actually, I'm, I'm remiss. There's, there's positive comments, and they definitely offered a lot of thanks to everybody that was involved and commented on how nice the plan looks and that it's really well organized. So there was, it's all positive, but there weren't any real discussion points or any topics that were brought up outside of that.
So what's left?
They have to have two public hearings. So that was the first one, and the next one is Tuesday. And if it goes like the last one, this time, I won't be presenting anything, so it'd probably just be hearings open, any comments, and if there isn't anybody from the public, I anticipate that they would just say, "Okay, we're good."
And they were really happy with the sort of collaboration that you pulled into it.
Yeah, I know it's been looked at, so that, and I would say that's a testament to everybody's work. I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of time put into that, so thank you.
Well, and, you know, I think, you know, it started under Jamie, when he was still here. And so I think, you know, there's that, probably provides them with some confidence that, you know, this was, started under good auspices and...
It is. So, yeah, so that's, that's that plan, and if there isn't anything else.
I have one thing. I wondered if, in Front Porch Forum, I wonder how many people are actually clicking on that link, if they even know what it is, and if perhaps we could put...
How many times the materials have been downloaded?
No. Oh, yeah, I was curious.
Oh, the plan.
Well, that wasn't my...
For the plan or for your meetings?
For the meetings.
Um, I can look that up.
I was just, more than that, I was thinking if we could put a small bullet-like paragraph for each of the major items that we're discussing, then maybe people would be more inclined to click on the link, just to, you know, three, four lines of...
In the agenda itself, or in the...
Yeah, just in the Front Porch Forum, just like a little three-paragraph thing, and then click on the link for further information or something.
Oh, like, and at this meeting, we'll be talking about Form Based zoning and this and that.
I've started to do that. I mean, there are some, not, I didn't do it six months ago, but starting maybe three or four months ago, there's a brief mention of the topics that will be discussed, but not, it's, it's not repeating in the materials.
But...
Front Porch Forum doesn't really give you the opportunity to embolden things or to do stuff like that when you're trying to post something there.
Formatting, sorry.
To format it in a way that really gives people, gets people's attention. Maybe the only way you could do it would be by skipping lines and bulging things or something, because you can't, you can't make it bold or underline it or make it a larger print.
And there's also that longer-term vision. There was one of the recommended actions to have a, like, to be able to facilitate online polls and that sort of thing that would draw more traffic to the website, that would potentially have people more aware of what's going on and possibly clicking on those things to be more engaged.
Yeah, I haven't seen a lot on Shelburne News at all about planning. Very rarely.
I, they have the odd article. They, they definitely had one about the Shelburne Business Association meeting when Robbie and I went in.
Mrs. Ross writes them.
That's right. She was the author.
Well, they have, they have a pretty good article about, well, the healthy living story, and then also the, the conflicts with the neighbors down at the Shelburne Green. They're, they're trying to do the... with the neighbors down at the Shelburne Green. They're, they're trying to do the expansion of the cafe. That was, that was, to me, promising, because the previous, under the previous regime, there, you know, all of that had kind of faded away. So they're starting to have more. I mean, I think, you know, that would be another area where we could kind of let them know that people like to read about that stuff.
Absolutely, there's that.
And encourage more coverage, you know, I don't know.
There's that, and I think a motion to adjourn would be soon, but I, I also, when you talk about that park and recognizing that there are some issues around that, I'm wondering if that's something that the Planning Commission should take a look at at some point, just around what the, the regs are in that, in that district and what the, what the key topics are, and if there might be a way to help with that process somehow. But for a future meeting, so.
Okay.
Anybody want to motion?
So moved.
All right, moved by Kate, seconded by Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.